Judy.
Okay. We are now in session. Winthrop.
Yes.
Askland.
No.
Okay. That was so automatic. Sims.
Howsh.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes.
Lori Askland is out ill this evening, also present as village manager Kent Bristol, and all those Plunkett, that's like Sultan from.
And should we be talking in our microphones?
Are we being mic?
Yes, can I get a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of personnel?
Second.
Hiring of village officials.
So we're not being mic.
Where you work.
So we have Sims and seconded.
Second.
Howsh. All right. Winthrop.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Howsh.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes.
Well, the meeting, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. We actually have already called the meeting into session, called the roll, and Lori is absent. She's ill. And now we'll move on to announcements. Any announcements, council members?
You always have an announcement.
I know. I feel like I should say something. Well, I guess I just wanted to give the final update about our village manager search. We had 60 applicants, nine of them were women, and Diane did report in the Y S News about the broad range of people that we got, not both nationally, but also in terms of folks with different backgrounds. And we just finished an executive session where we're starting to now look more carefully at those applicants. And by the way, we do have Doug Plunkett right here in the room, our head, right in front of you, Krista.
Yes. And he is our key person on the, for management partners. So, thanks Doug.
Any citizens with announcements? Okay. Move on to a review of the minutes. We'll first do the minutes of February 24th, which is a special budget session. Page one. Page two. Page three. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Staying.
And on to the minutes of March 3rd. Page one. Page two. Page three. Page four. Page five. Page six.
I do have a change on page one, I'm sorry. Where about two-thirds of the way down it says that I was unwilling to pass a deficit operations budget. I don't think I said that. I was not willing to pass a deficit budget that had several hundred thousand dollars of deficit in it. The degree of deficit was what concerned me.
Do you have that, Judy?
Yes.
Okay. And that's, is that it from everyone? Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
On to a review of the agenda. Any agenda items that we want to change or rearrange or add? Marian, anything?
Well, under future agenda items, or do you want to do that?
Yeah, we'll do that under future agenda items, yeah. So I'll go, since Lori isn't here, I'll review the positions and communications. We received letters from Fred and Joy Bartonstein, Debbie Henderson, Nick Buddhist, in support of funding, putting some funding into the green space fund. We received a letter from Oscar Robinson, expressing support for the Yellow Springs Police Department. Dawn Johnson with a comment about water sourcing and design-build opportunities. She was recommending Kent Research. We have, we had a proposal from John Day and Sean Jackson of Yellow Springs High School regarding stumble stones projects that I think Brian will be.
Actually, John is here and will speak during citizen concerns.
Oh, okay, great. And then we had reports in our packet from the Yellow Springs Police Department, Streets Department, and Water and Water Reclamation Departments. We'll move on to public hearings and legislation. We have the second reading and public hearing of ordinance 2014-06, approving a water rate increase and declaring an emergency.
Okay, whereas the Village Water Fund is the least healthy of the various village funds, and whereas foreseeable capital improvements requirements will further stress the resources of the Water Fund, and whereas scheduled rate increases established in 2010 are proving insufficient to fund the needs of the water utility, now therefore the Council of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio does hereby ordain that. Section one, the rate increase previously ordained to take effect on April 1, 2014 is hereby repealed. Section two, in its place, a new rate to take effect on April 1, 2014 is hereby enacted as follows. Monthly readiness for service charge, $6.80. Consumption charge per 1,000 gallons, $5.25. Section three, this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure immediately necessary to preserve the public interest and for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the village, wherefore this ordinance shall be in effect immediately upon its adoption by council.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Does, I mean Kent could say a few words. I think we've talked about this. Would you just talk Kent about the reason for the increase at this point and this?
Yeah, we're looking at capital needs on the order of three to four million dollars for the Water Fund, and it's barely keeping itself afloat financially now without those. So we need to start setting money aside to meet these very near-term future needs.
And this increase is actually helping us get into the black, right? I think the fund balance had been in the red until we enacted this increase.
Yes.
Comments from council members?
Maybe, again, just emphasizing that, you know, we were considering a much higher increase in the water rate, and we want to move slowly with that. And last time we also mentioned that one option may be to transfer some funds from the electric fund to the Water Fund to keep rates as low as we can. So we are trying to be conservative in this case.
This is a second reading and public hearing. I will open the public hearing for citizen comments. Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council table.
I'd just like to comment on what Brian said, because I didn't understand the same way that Brian did. My understanding was if we moved money from the electric fund to the water, that would most likely be for building or rehabbing or whatever we're going to do for a plant, as opposed to helping to subsidize water rates.
Well, no. The Water Fund is facing three to four million dollars in capital needs. And if you can meet part of that need from the electric fund, then the rates can go up less. It won't reduce rates, but it will reduce the amount of the increase necessary.
Right. I mean, it's essentially, I would say that this increase is, I'd say half of it is to stabilize the fund. Melissa, you're, and then probably the other half is going into building the balance for capital improvements. As Kent says, we've got at least a million, at least a million and a half on water sourcing, and we have two water distribution projects that are going to total close to a million dollars. So we've got, we've got a lot of capital projects we've got to be saving for.
Yeah, so the, yeah, so the transfer won't reduce the current rate. It'll reduce the amount of the increase.
Yeah. I was just looking at the transfers mainly covering capital and repairs, as opposed to operations of the.
Right, yes, yes, it's capital.
Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Howsh.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes.
Winthrop.
Yes. Now we're moving on to Resolution 2014-7, 2014 Annual Appropriations and Declaring an Emergency.
Okay, whereas this ordinance is adopted to make appropriations for expenses and other expenditures of the Village of Yellow Springs, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2014, now therefore the Council for the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio hereby ordains that. Section one, to provide for expenses and other expenditures of the Yellow Springs during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2014, the following sums are hereby set aside and appropriated as follows. Section two, that they be appropriated from the general fund. That total is $2,897,488. Section three, that they be appropriated from the following special revenue funds. That total is $1,115,510. Section four, that it be appropriated from the capital projects funds, and there is no total there, because this is currently just the operations budget. Section five, that they be appropriated from the enterprise funds. That total is $4,455,023. Section six, that the appropriation from the total fund budget is as follows. Grand total appropriations of all funds is $8,468,021. Section seven, the finance director and village manager are hereby authorized to draw warrants on the village treasury for payments from any of the foregoing appropriations upon receiving proper certificates and vouchers therefore approved by an ordinance of council to make the expenditures, provided that no warrants shall be drawn or paid for salaries or wages except persons employed by authority of and in accordance with such ordinance. Section eight, this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure immediately necessary to preserve the public interest and for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the village, wherefore this ordinance shall be in effect immediately upon its adoption by council. Section nine, this ordinance shall take effect at the earliest period allowed by law.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. As Judy said, as she was reading through this, there is no capital in this budget. It is a, an operations budget only, just because of the time constraints we're under. We have to have this budget into the Green County Auditor by March 31st. So, given that, given that this is our finance director's first budget, and we had a lot to talk about and a lot of capital projects, and I would say some unexpected deficits, some unexpected, you know, I will tell you that I was definitely surprised by where some of the numbers were coming in, that we felt like we needed a little bit more time just to concentrate on the, on the operations budget, and then we'll move on. We'll do a supplemental. We'll talk specifically about capital in April, and then we'll do a supplemental to bring on the capital. So, our finance director, Melissa Van Zant, is here, so I will ask her to come forward. I don't know if there's anything specifically, I see we have something on our desk, if.
That, what's in front of you just kind of outlines the changes that were made, that were proposed after the last meeting. The number at the top was where the budget started out at the last meeting.
Yeah, it's the same, we have the same number.
The number at the top was what was proposed at the March 3rd meeting, and then if you subtract the 2014 officer, which was the proposal, it shows a figure how it affected the personnel budget and the police department's budget, but then it also affected two other areas. The police pension fund is where the full-time police officers' pension is paid out of, and there's a transfer that comes from the general fund that helps support that, so you'll see where the transfer from the general fund was reduced by that amount, 5,088. And then the police pension fund was also reduced by that amount as well, because it wouldn't be paid out for pension. And then there was also the added appropriation to the green space fund for the Glenn Easement. So that shows how the previous budget figure sat, and then where the new total is, how we got to that point.
And I do want to specifically mention the easement for the green space. The hundred thousand dollars is for the easement that we've already agreed to. We basically passed the legislation in 2013 to put a hundred thousand dollars towards that. So this is basically taking it out of the, out of the special projects fund that it is in, sitting there waiting just for this kind of an appropriation. So we're not taking that money out of the general fund. We're taking it out of the fund that we've already put money into for that purpose. Probably typically, and this isn't, I actually, when Melissa asked me a question about whether she should add that in, I said, yeah, go ahead. Probably typically that would have been done in the supplemental, just so that it didn't impact, so directly impact the operating budget. But it's done, and I don't think it's a big deal. I mean, it would have had to have happened anyway. I just want people to understand, this isn't an additional general fund expenditure. It's money that's, that has been designated in a fund for green space acquisition. Any other questions? Any other comments you'd like to make, Melissa?
Yeah, there was something this morning when I was, I spent the day updating the Excel spreadsheet for upload tomorrow, should the budget be passed, and there, I mean, the budget that you all see, the appropriations budget, this is the legal level that we, the minimum legal level, which we have to report to the county. There's about 1,200 lines in the budget, so it's really big. And when I was going through updating everything for the Excel spreadsheet, I did miss one line, so it's going to have to go in a supplemental, and of course it was in the police department budget. It was under their contractual services. There was a other contractual services line that was budgeted, 13,500. The expenditures last year were 18,000, so it was under what was actually spent last year, but it will have to be included in a supplemental appropriation when we go to do the capital projects. But out of 1,200-plus lines of budget, that was one that was missed in this original spreadsheet. So it was there, but when I did the total at the bottom, I didn't grab that one figure. So that was my mistake.
I'd say that's okay.
Rookie mistake.
You're allowed one.
So other than that, I gave, I gave how we arrived, and then I also gave some historical information that had been requested, fund balances, as well as revenues and expenditures for the last, I think it went back to 2005, the revenues and expenditures, and then since 2008, the fund balances, because that was all that was in the new software. But that was a separate document.
Thanks, Melissa.
You're welcome.
Counsel, comments, questions?
I have questions, some would be for you and some for counsel, I think. I just have a concern about this document that we're passing, that it includes capital project funds, and as we've said, there are no funds in, nothing included, but I'm just assuming we're not being held to this, since we are going to come back and pass a capital budget.
We can amend the budget anytime.
Yes, it'll be a supplemental appropriation. You can, you can change the budget 30 times in a year if you want to. The auditor wouldn't like it, but you can do it.
Okay, well.
You wouldn't like it either.
No, I wouldn't like it either.
Then another question I had for you, Melissa, is in the document, this document, for 2013, general revenue and expenses, it appears that the expenses for 2013 were almost $2,000 more than the revenue. But I thought that, I thought that expenses were only $30,000 more, so I'm clearly, I'm missing something.
This was everything. This included general funds, special revenue funds, as well as the enterprise funds as well. So that was all the grand totals of everything is on that front page there. So some funds were healthier than others, and that's, that's kind of where it ended the year.
So last year, that deficit that we did experience, was that just in the general fund, the 30,000?
I believe so, if I remember correctly. And then the enterprise funds, like the electric fund helped pads that kind of thing. So there were some funds that were healthier than others, but overall, that's what the year ended.
And then, would we assume that deficit, the 200,000, was taken up in large part maybe by capital improvement kind of things, or repair kind of things, as opposed to just operations? I mean, spilling down on our reserve funds for particular purposes?
I don't know what the total capital projects spent last year was. I can look that up for you, though.
We actually didn't do a lot. I mean, we, we actually ended up, we had a pretty big capital budget, but we ended up not doing a lot of, a lot of those projects. I'd say it's probably overall, if it was only 200,000 deficit, probably mostly capital took it to that. I mean, this is, this I think is the first year we've had, well, the first year since I've been here, I think that we've had a deficit operating budget.
Oh.
Well, maybe the first year since we passed the levy. Let's just, let's say that. I mean, the levy, the levy helped a lot, and, but we're eating into that, eating into our fund balance.
Another question I had about the levy was, when it was passed, was it primarily for capital improvements and getting fund balances up, or was it realized that we needed that for operations, or was it both?
Both. Both. And, and it covered, it said, it's a general fund levy. It's a large general fund levy, as opposed to, say, specific street funds or park funds, or, it is general, it is to fund the general fund, help to fund the general fund. So that includes the pool, and includes the library renovations, it includes the police. It basically includes everything that's in the general fund, and the way that we communicated to the community, and the way the community communicated back to us, is that that's the kind of levy they wanted. They wanted the general services and amenities that the community provided. So it was, it was really to have a little bit of both. Recognizing that it, that's a stagnant levy. That levy is only for $767,000, and it doesn't renew at any higher level. So, so that levy is not bringing in any more money now than it did seven years ago when it was first passed. So it's.
Or less money either.
Well, it should be the same. At some point in the past, either the legislature or the courts decided that when Ohioans approve a tax levy, they aren't approving a rate, they're approving a yield. So if it's worth 500,000, when it's voted in, and property values double, the rate halves to continue bringing out the same number of dollars. It's a strange way to do it, but it's the Ohio way, apparently.
I guess the last question, and, and I don't, I don't, I guess it's for you, is, because this is a fairly complex budget, for me anyway, I'm not totally clear what is getting included in capital and what's getting included in operations. So there were requests by different departments, for example, the park department, and this budget that we're approving now, does it, or the sidewalk, for example, is, are the sidewalk improvements included in? So that would be, that'll be in what we're going to have.
This is just paying people and fueling trucks and.
Okay.
Buying office supplies and things like that. So this is just general operating costs, nothing extra. The only thing that's kind of extra, which Kent was kind of surprised how it's structured, is that the paving is included in the streets budget already. There's $175,000 already put aside for that. And for some reason, they started doing it like that last year, allocating the paving in with the streets budget. So that's the only kind of big-ticket item that's kind of extra, which people like to weigh in on, is just the streets, paving is already included in the streets. Other than that, it's just general operations.
Okay, thank you, Melissa.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I think the only comment I have is, I understand the need to approve this budget, you know, to meet the requirements, but I do think there are at least a couple issues that we need to revisit in April. One of those being the green space fund, and then also looking at the budget for the police department. So, you know, I'm willing to pass this tonight, but I just want, I guess, citizens to know that these are issues that we will talk more about in our upcoming meetings.
Well, the green space fund would be a capital item, so.
That's what I thought.
It would legitimately happen in April with all the other.
Okay.
Capital expenditures.
Good.
And I think, although I agree with you that, you know, as Kent said, we can't amend this budget when, when we would like to. I think the green space fund is something we could talk about in, in capital. When it comes to the, the police budget, that may be a little soon. I think maybe when we have a new manager who's able to take a look at some operational things, I think maybe, maybe we should hold off on committing to making a decision on the police budget, an increase in, in the police budget until then.
Okay.
I, that would, we can revisit in April when we're talking about capital, but, you know, none of their requests are related to capital.
Right.
And I want to make clear for myself personally that my, my vote and my decision on that slight reduction in the police budget was simply because of the deficit, because feeling that adding another person was a commitment that was taking us to a point that was an increasing point, being concerned with, with seeing this budget deficit that I don't know how we're going to, to work out of. It was no reflection whatsoever on the operations of the police department, anything about the police department itself. It was only about the budget deficit, and that being one of the larger increases in the budget.
I guess I'd like to also say that if we're going to continue to be facing what it seems like we may be facing of stagnant or moderately increasing revenues, and definitely increasing expenses that lead us into the kind of deficit budget that we had initially, that I think it, the council and the village as a whole, will probably need to examine the kind of services we have, the police services, as well as the parks, all of the things that we do, and prioritize what those services are, because it may be that we're not able to pay for some of the things that we have in the past, and we may need to be more strategic.
I think that's worth, worth being said. Brian brought up a couple of new revenue opportunities. We don't have a lot. Municipal income tax and property tax are our big-ticket items. One new opportunity we'll have in about 18 months is bed tax. We have a large hotel going, a large hotel for us going in, that will, will allow us to get some significant bed tax. So that's something that I think we need to, to work on enacting. Brian mentioned a.
Admissions tax?
An admission or an event-type tax that he's going to do some research on, and I'm, I've decided I'm going to hammer away as much as I can at, at state legislators and the state about sales tax, and the fact that we're a community that has a lot of expense. We, we see a lot of expense because we're an entertainment and tourist community that generates a lot of sales tax. Sales tax, or unfortunately, those jobs don't generate a lot of revenue. So we're contributing an awful lot to the state and to the, to the county economy in sales tax that we're seeing no benefits of. So I'm, I've already started a, a letter writing and a contact campaign to try to figure out, is there a way for them to either consider a slight extra percentage from municipalities to levy, or can they look at how they levy, not just per capita, but, which is what they're doing now, but can we get more because we're contributing more? So we're looking for additional revenue, plus economic development, obviously. More jobs means more income tax. So that's the other opportunity that we have, so. Any other comments? Citizens, this is a second reading and public hearing. I will open the floor for citizen comments for the public hearing. Any comments?
Just a quick, about the green space fund, one more time. So that is, you have to transfer that from a special, the special projects fund that the money is already in.
Right.
So it's able to be used this year.
Right.
So you would have had to transfer that to the general fund at some point.
No, it's not a transfer. It's, we budgeted the expenditure. In other words, we have a pot of money sitting there in that fund, and we have to say in the budget, we're taking so much out of that for the Glenn Helen Easement.
Okay, gotcha.
And, but the, but the discussion that Brian brought up about a discussion during the capital, that, that is, would be actually taking money from the general fund to put into the special projects fund. That is just something we will revisit when we talk about capital.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Seeing and hearing none, we'll bring it back to council table. Judy, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Sims.
Yes.
Howsh.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes.
Winthrop.
Yes. Let's see, where's my agenda? Next, we have Resolution 2014-15, approving a contract with eGov for website hosting.
Okay, this is off.
Okay, this is authorizing a contract with eGov Strategies to create an internet website for the village and assist in its operation, expansion, and maintenance. Whereas the Village of Yellow Springs wishes to expand its use of the internet for the purpose of communicating with residents and others, and eventually facilitate the use of electronic media in support of various processes and transactions. And whereas eGov Strategies has developed a model specifically tailored to meeting the online needs of municipal governments, which the village would like to adopt, now therefore, the council of the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, does hereby resolve that. Section 1, we accept the terms proposed for the development and expansion of an internet website for the village by eGov Strategies. Section 2, the village agrees to pay eGov Strategies $16,165 for creation and the first year of maintenance and hosting of its online persona. Section 3, the village manager is hereby authorized and directed to execute an agreement with eGov Strategies for the services cited above.
Can I get a motion, please?
Second.
Brian, you've done most of this work, so I will turn it over to you to review.
Yeah, well, just some of the things we talked about in our last meeting, some of the issues that we've been having with being able to update the website and being able to communicate more, and really sort of meet one of our main goals as a council, to promote participation, has not really been happening with our current site, partly because it, our village staff can't really get in there and fix it. So the eGov solution allows for anybody, basically, that understands how to type to update it without running into any problems. So it's going to make Judy's life a lot easier, for example. It's also got a lot of really robust kinds of applications so that we can communicate, send out messages. All the different commissions and departments are going to be able to have a presence on this website, and ultimately, it ends up saving us about half of what we pay monthly to sort of host and keep things up to date. So overall, I think everybody's really excited about this solution. Also, online payments of utility bills is, is one of the apps that is included in that, so people will not have to leave their homes to pay their bills if they don't want to. And I think otherwise, I would just refer to, there was a nice summary in our last packet about the 10 or so benefits that I, that I, that we all thought made sense.
And it will take about four months, is that...
That's right. Right.
And, and I think I would, and I'm not sure about this, but would you say that the electronic payment probably will take a while because Melissa has to coordinate it? That's something that we probably shouldn't promise upfront.
Right. I mean, it's, it's included, so we can switch it on whenever we want. Yeah.
And we will not accept Bitcoin in payment.
See?
Hey, you little tax savvy tonight.
By the way, I do really like how Persona ended up in this resolution.
Yes.
I thought that was very well articulated.
Currency that's about to go belly up.
Any other comments, any questions from anybody else?
Well, I'd just like to say that I went to a couple cities, including Key West, that use this system, and I was very impressed. And I think that it's very user-friendly, and will allow a lot of linkages between village government and other organizations, and a lot of documents that are village documents to be easily accessed by citizens.
Yeah, one of the neat things is when we set up an agenda through this system, you can link the documents to each topic. So for those of you that review our packets now, you won't have to page down through, you know, 50-some-odd pages, but you can go right to what you're looking for. So very easy to search for documents, and over 400 municipalities use this solution. So we feel pretty confident that they know what they're doing.
Great. Any comments or questions from citizens?
Because it's just a one-time upfront payment, is what you're asking for, and there's no ongoing cost?
The ongoing is, it's 275 a month, or two, I'm sorry, 225 a month for the hosting piece. The rest of that is, yeah, the upfront, just to put the website together, migrate all the information over and everything.
Other comments? Bringing it back to council table, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is final piece of legislation, is Resolution 2014-16, approving a contract with Green County for countywide paving.
Okay, whereas village council has determined that it is necessary to repair certain streets within the village, and whereas the Green County, Ohio, engineer has made a cooperative, competitive paving bid contract available through the village, and whereas staff has advised council that the county contract should be advantageous for financial and practical reasons, and has compiled a list of streets for repairs, now therefore, the council for the Village of Yellow Springs, Ohio, hereby resolves that. Section 1, the village hereby enters into the cooperative paving agreement attached to this resolution as Exhibit A. Section 2, the village manager is authorized and directed to execute the agreement on behalf of the village and to increase the scope of services as appropriate to accomplish the project in the best interest of the village.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Kent, will you look at that list and tell me, are those the streets we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, I'll read the, I'll read the streets. Jason had brought this, I think, to the Capitol meeting. So streets to be repaved this, this year, I'm not sure when it will be, but will certainly give people plenty of notice, Woodrow, Spillon, Edgefield, Miami, Lisa, Brookside, Southgate, and Shawnee. So everything south is south of town. What about, what about those?
That's also included.
That's included?
Yeah, it's fair acres.
Then, it would also include Northwood, Gardendale, and Whitehall, north of town. So those, that is, as Melissa was talking about, that actually is included in our, in our general fund budget, for some reason. So anyway, that's all budgeted for this year. Any questions, comments from citizens, or from council?
Kent, I, I was just wondering, with Key Sally, are, are we doing anything with that?
No, nothing planned.
Nothing planned? Okay.
Can we fill some potholes?
Oh, yeah, we do that, sure.
All right, that'd be nice. Okay.
That, that's repair, that's not repaving.
Right.
Citizens, comments, questions? Seeing and hearing none, bring it back to council table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 We're all speaking up loudly, I can tell now. Okay, next on our agenda is citizens' concerns, and that's for any item that's not already on the agenda. And Mr. Day was already announced as being here to talk about a project, so welcome to come on up. Council did have information on this in our packet.
Yes, I'm John Day. I'm a teacher at the high school, I've been for 20-some years, and I worked, the Yellow Springs Schools are now doing a project-based learning focus, and I came up with a project with a colleague for which the idea is essentially to make microhistorical markers. And these would be small, at ground level, essentially, surface area about 12 inches by 4 inches made of stone. And I think it's a win-win situation for our students, because they would be learning more about Yellow Springs history, and we have incredible history here, but it would also be a way to make our history more public for residents and visitors. The plan is to have a very small line of information, almost none, on the text itself. It would just say something like, "Site of the World War I Training Camp." But it would have a QR code where a visitor with a smartphone could click on that, and that would link to student-created content that might include interviews, or historical photos, or other information about that aspect of our history. And we would also create paper brochures for people who didn't have smartphones. But our hope is that council will approve this in principle, and then, we have not selected sites yet, but if council would like us to, we can come back later in the spring, maybe at the end of April at that meeting, where students could tell you what sites they would like to do for final approval. And that's, that's the basic concept. I don't know if you have any questions?
And where will they, where are you planning on installing them?
Well, it would depend. So if it were on, you know, village property, if it were, say, the, the World War I Training Camp, which is at Antioch, we would have to work out with Antioch, you know, where was this site and get their approval for it. Or for, say, an individual residence, you know, so-and-so, you know, Jonas Bender, the one of the first African-American Marines in Yellow Springs, you know, that might be in his, at the edge of the street by his front yard with his approval. Another one might be on village-owned land, if that made sense for what the location was. So at this point, we're just kind of brainstorming ideas, and then part of the process will be students, you know, deciding what is most historically important, that we should be memorializing, and then we'll come to the property owners or to the village to get approval for that.
And is this something you see carrying on? Is this a project-based learning project that you think will carry on for years?
We would love to have this be a pilot project, and if it goes well and we get good feedback, to keep going. And for this year, we've gotten Dodd's Monument to agree to make the stones for us for free, which is amazing. And in the future, other kinds of sites, so in the, in the Arts Commission meeting, we were saying, well, if they were downtown, you couldn't have a stone on the sidewalk, you know, maybe it would be a plaque, so we might have to change the exact format. But we would love to have this be an ongoing project, and the idea is that each year, we might have a different theme. So this year, we're planning on doing one on war and peace, and maybe next year would be civil rights, or inventors and innovators. So there, I think, kind of the sky's the limit, but we would love to keep doing it.
That's great. I think it's really exciting. Always love when student, when senior projects, well, I guess this isn't a senior project, I'm sorry, I can't get over my son's senior project, so...
[laughter]
I've never been able to get over that. But this is great, I mean, I love...
This is where maybe a dog park might have been.
Yeah, it would be Lukastanl Memorial Dog Park. No, not Memorial, so... So, no, I think it's great. Council, questions, comments?
I think it's great.
From, from a council standpoint, couldn't he just work with village manager?
Oh, absolutely, I think so, yeah. I mean, it sounds like a lot of them probably won't even involve us.
Right.
Right. Well, I'll be back in touch with you when we have a provisional list, and, and if you want us to come in, we can come in, if you think we can just work with the village.
And I believe that you were directed towards, towards a zoning administrator. Did that prove, is, is that going to be necessary, or is this...
I think she thought if we got council's approval, then that was adequate for that zoning.
Citizens, questions or comments?
Yeah, and I just want to thank John for bringing this to the Public Art Commission. It was nice to hear about it, there were lots of good ideas, and, and also, the commission thought it was a great idea, so...
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other citizen concerns? Okay. Next, we go to special reports. I see Energy Board Chair Jerry Papania here, if you would. He actually, they did include a nice report in the packet, but we'd like to hear from Jerry also.
I'm Jerry Papania, and last week, I was the chair of the Energy Board. Our current members are Mary Ann McQueen, who's a council rep, Rick Walkie is now the chair of the Energy Board, Eric Johnson, Dan Rudolph, Brett Henderson, and myself. And we meet the second Tuesday of the month at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. And y'all have a report in front of you, for the benefit of the television audience, we'll go over it briefly. In 2013, it marked the final year of the original three-year contract for the Efficiency Smart Program, and those services were valued at about $183,000. And they were provided to the village as part of the consent decree between AMP and EPA regarding violations at the Corset Generating Facility, from which we drew power for the village, portion of our power. The Efficiency Smart Program achieved around 235% of, I might add, a pretty modest 1.66 conservation goal over the three, over the life of the three-year contract. And projects that were conceived, initiated by the village accounted for about 42% of the debt savings, and the two major projects were the replacement of the streetlights and addressing energy-efficient lighting here in the village building. And combined those two projects, saved the village approximately $60,000 a year in operating and maintenance costs. Antioch accounted for about 41% of the savings, that's an ongoing effort. Residential actions accounted for about 11%. Tom's Market did a lighting project that accounted for about 4%, and YSI Xylem contributed about 2% to that savings. Rebuilt rebates to the village amounted to $48,861, which was about 27% of the actual program cost. Village Council voted in September last year to extend the Efficiency Smart Program for the next three-year period, 2014 through 16. And it should be noted that many of the opportunities for significant savings offered by existing buildings and infrastructure, other than residential, has been acted upon, so much of the future savings will come from energy conservation efforts made in new construction. Overall, the village used about 2.9% less energy in 2013 than it did in 2012. While energy efficiency played a role in that, the cooling degree days last year were about 25% less than in 2012, and as we all know, air conditioning's a major load on the system. So that was a significant contributor to the energy savings as well. Last year, the village received about 28% of its power from renewable sources, and the contracts in place will raise renewable power contribution to the village to 71% this year, when hydroelectric projects that are currently under construction come online if they're on schedule. And then, when the final hydro project comes online in 2015, that'll put us at about 78% renewable power in the village, which is commendable. Antioch College continues with its sustainability efforts, and the installation of the campus geothermal system is in progress, and the transition away from fossil fuels, natural gas in particular, will ultimately result in increased power demand by the village, but that'll be tempered somewhat by their ongoing renovation efforts that'll be driven by energy efficiency. Also, a one-megawatt solar array is anticipated to serve the campus in the near future, and that installation will consume about 86% of the village's current available capacity for a large-scale solar project, but will still have some opportunities available with smaller commercial projects and residential projects. The Energy Board also reviewed the village's policy on net metering in 2013 that was related to customer generation and supply renewable power to our distribution system, and we made recommendations for council's revision of that ordinance. Next year, well, I should say this year, 2014, we'll work with village staff and others to continue and to promote the Efficiency Smart Program, which has residential, commercial, and industrial components to it. We'll investigate opportunities to... We'll investigate opportunities to improve village supply, power reliability, and quality. And we'll support energy efficiency awareness issues and education in Yellow Springs Schools. So that's what's on task this year. Any questions?
Can you tell me what you mean by improving village supply power reliability and quality?
Well, there apparently was some communications with, I believe it was Mary Ann. I don't know if it was you exclusively or it was the council in general.
No.
About, a business had stated that one of the reasons that they left Yellow Springs was that the power was unreliable in Yellow Springs. I don't know the history of that.
When was this? How recently was this?
I think it's been within the last two or three years.
Now, that really came from the letter that Steve Deal sent to council, but it was addressed to Community Resources. And his company didn't leave because of that issue, but he stated that power slowed down, what do you call it, brownouts and spikes were issues for his business at the time. Apparently Reggie Stratton had indicated that that was true at Creative Memories. So we just felt it was, we were going to investigate to see how much of an issue that was.
I think a lot of this happened before the village's recent tree trimming campaign. But I think there are also situations where there are spikes in power, but normally people who are power-sensitive have surge protectors or uninterruptible power supplies on site to compensate for that.
I just wanted to be sure. I mean, I think it's fine to do that. I just wanted to make sure that folks didn't think that there was some, kind of an immediate issue on power reliability or quality. I mean, I think that the power reliability and quality has improved dramatically recently. I think, and the power line, or trimming the lines, I think, has been a major factor, so.
Well, apparently, the Energy Task Force, which preceded the current Energy Board, made some recommendations. There was some consultation with AMP, I think, about installing a third circuit in the village. And this was before my time. I don't know the history of it. So the intent is to talk to the people in the electric service department and maybe resurrect some of that old report and see what was acted upon and what might need to take a look at.
And that was mentioned to Johnny Burns when we were talking about the capital, electric department capital projects. Good, okay.
So Jerry, in terms of the first part of the agenda for this year about promoting the Energy Smart, Efficiency Smart more, one of the thoughts I would have is, given what we talked about with the new website, if, you know, we could feature that more prominently, I think that would be really good. And so maybe that's something that the commission can think about. And then I also was wondering, as far as building awareness with the schools, have you guys talked concretely about that or?
We've had some conversations. We had a board member who was a member of the faculty who has since left. And we'd like to invite somebody from the school system to join the Energy Board if they're interested.
Okay, great.
And, you know, I live in LA. I'd like to maybe see a concentration, a study on energy issues, just like they've done with water or those kind of things.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Jerry. Thanks to the rest of you.
Yeah, thank you, Jerry.
Next is a discussion on water sourcing. Kent?
We are still waiting to hear back from Springfield with numbers that will help us make a good comparison. I'll throw this out for council's consideration. I don't know how big a role facts and figures and numbers play. I really think it's more of a political decision than a value judgment than a strictly dollars and cents one. If dollars and cents are the only measure, whatever Springfield comes back with, they're still probably the cheapest choice over a hundred-year period. But I think there are a number of people in Yellow Springs who've got strong reservations about relying on someone else, anyone else, for water. And I think that's the real issue, not how much it'll cost. So, I don't know how to address that.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, if we could have some sort of discussion or some sort of analysis of, you know, what are those pros and cons from a policy, from an issue, I mean, and that does really come from us, but it would be nice to see those laid out and by a professional. And I, you know, I'm not sure council is in a position. I mean, one of the thoughts I've had is, you know, we do have a lot of experts, a lot of water experts in this community. And wondering, I mean, one of our largest employer is an expert in water. So it seems that we have the ability to pull together a committee, a citizen committee of experts in this community to maybe start to explore some of those pros and cons of philosophical types of pros and cons, too.
Well, we talked about possibly having either a special forum on water or on a month where there were five Mondays, having a special council meeting.
A working meeting.
That focused on that. And I think that that makes sense to do that.
I mean, I'm feeling at this point with Kent, Kent going out on medical leave Wednesday and with, we're not quite sure when he's going to be returning. I think we probably need to just kind of bite the bullet on this one and say, we're not going to be able to deliver what we thought we were going to. I don't know that we should be taking up this discussion at this point until we have a new manager.
You're saying just set the water sourcing thing aside until we have a new manager? Is that what you're saying?
I think so. I, you know, I don't think this is a decision we can make without a manager. It's not a decision I want to make without a manager. Kent is now, is not going to be available to us. We don't know for how long. That's, it's the uncertainty of not knowing. You know, if he's back in two weeks, then we can pick it up again.
Yeah, one of my suggestions was to do a poll, a public opinion poll, sample the public, and see if, how many of the, what proportion are actually even willing to consider getting a source from outside the village. If the answer is that's only 20 or 30% of your residents, then it becomes a pretty simple question.
Well, we would need some facts to, I mean, to start that, don't you think?
Right. I mean, if, I think that people who say they absolutely would refuse to get their water from any place but Yellow Springs, if they were presented with it's going to cost twice as much to get, to build a new plant, I think that's a premise that you have to put forward. You know, if it's 10% more, probably not. If it's 50% more, if it's 100% more. I mean, I think we have to have some numbers. And I agree with you, it's not a complete dollars and cents decision. But I think that there have to be some comparative numbers to make that decision.
Well, I guess I'm comfortable waiting until we have a new manager, but I do think it would be good to sort of put some tentative timeline on making a decision. And I also do think that we should have some kind of public process that involves whatever information we have. And look at, as I think John Eastman has talked about, get the money and the financial figures and then look at the value, political issues, and look at both of them.
Brian, what do you?
Well, so basically, we're still on hold with getting updated numbers from Springfield. Kent?
Yes, yes.
They're too busy. Yeah, I agree with Mary Ann. I'd like to try to get something on the schedule because I wonder if, even if we don't have that manager in place, if we couldn't have, start to have that, you know, working meeting that we talked about. And the new village manager could always watch that on, you know, on the DVD to get caught up. So I guess I'd like to find a way to start assessing what citizens think.
I feel like we don't have enough information to present to them, though. I feel like it's scattered. It hasn't been compiled. I don't have the ability. I don't think anybody on council should be doing that. It needs to be put together by staff. And I, so that's what is making me wonder, should we put the citizen committee together now rather than waiting and have them, that committee, be part of setting up a community forum? Jerry?
I think we need experts. The last go-around with the water discussion was good. We did have some questions on, did we have all the facts and so forth? So, but I, my gut feel is that, you know, yeah, I may want to be on that committee, but do I know enough about water to do that? So that's why I'm, I want to, if we decide to set up something, I want to make sure we have people that are knowledgeable on water, what it takes to get water, what it takes to distribute water and so forth. And because of the cost we've heard in the past, I don't believe it's something that we can rush into. And we're definitely going to need someone to lead that and pull that together. So I would be inclined to, and we're probably talking, what, three months before we have someone in place? And that would be one of the main priorities, would be to look into that. We've got water now. Unless Joe tells me differently, you know, the system's not going to break down in the next 30, 60, 90 days, so. And depending on the route that the community wants to go, that's going to be a major dollar in undertaking for us. I just feel it's better to put a real good group together to do that, so.
I'm not sure what kind of experts we need. I mean, we can get information on how much it costs to rehab the plant, how much it costs to build a new plant. We can get that information, as well as the Springfield cost. The other things are, I think, you know, what is the significance of having control of our water as opposed to not having control of our water? I mean, and I don't know that we need experts to.
I think softening is an issue. I think softening is a definite issue that has to be dealt with.
Yes.
And, you know, it's, that's the reason that Springfield is on the table is because they have lime-softened water. And there are issues with, you know, there are people that absolutely, I hear, you know, there are people that absolutely don't want anything in their water, but there are also people that absolutely want softened water. That, you know, they're tired of their pipes. They're tired of the extra expense they have with pipes and with fixtures and with everything else coming from softened water. And if it's not softened till it gets, till it starts running through, all the pipes coming into the house and into the locations are problematic. Large businesses are going to have to put some pretty expensive equipment in for softening. So, like Antioch College, I mean, that's a pretty significant expense that they have to put into softening.
So, on experts, are you talking, I mean, so why do we need an expert about that, though?
To understand the, to understand the, all of the different, the different possibilities for softening, to understand.
I think there's only one possibility, though.
Well, there are.
For us.
The only thing we can afford is what they call ion extreme softening, which puts sodium in the water, which is bad for people's health.
Right.
If you buy from Springfield, they use a different process because they operate on a bigger scale.
Yes, yeah.
And it doesn't have the negative health implications. It doesn't give you as soft a water. But it's much better than what we have now.
I guess what I'm just feeling is that, yes, it would take some time to put a process together for the community, but I'm not sure that we need a lot of experts.
See, I'm talking in terms of, you know, involving YSI or Xylem. They had some concerns when we were last looking at water and their impact, of course, the college. And we really also have not looked at our infrastructure. For example, if we were to go to Springfield, water now runs one way. If we got water from Springfield, water's going to run in the opposite direction. We haven't looked at a lot of our infrastructure and what the impact would be. Now, if we're just talking about getting a committee together to get the field for the community, do they want to own their own water or do they want a contract for water? Yeah, to me, that's real simple. But to me, there's a lot more into the water decision that we need to make sure that we have the facts and we have credible facts to present to the community.
I think it does start with a lot of the financial stuff, though. Sorry, Brian.
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, from what I've heard so far, I like your idea of at least calling out to experts or concerned citizens that might be willing to work on this and, you know, start to look at the data that we do have. Maybe the data from Springfield will be updated soon so that we are continuing to talk about it. I agree, we shouldn't rush into a decision, but I'd like to at least see who at YSI Xylem could come forward. Is Joe Bates going to be part of this committee, obviously? Is a council person going to be in that? And we had talked about before about having these working committees, so maybe, you know, this is a way to get that started.
Okay. I'll bring something, a proposal or something to the next meeting. Yeah, and I think the members should have a specific knowledge, professional knowledge, expertise, connection to water. I think that this is, this is a committee, this is a group that will be required to have specific knowledge, not just an interest in the discussion, so. Any other comments, Kent, as you leave us?
Still hope to come back.
I know. I'm, I don't, I hope you don't think I'm sounding, like, ominous in my concern. Okay, next, the next thing on our discussion, oh, I'm sorry, citizens, comments from citizens. Jerry?
I think one of, you know, you're talking about putting together a committee with some expertise. I think it's important that you get someone with some professional hydrology experience. Because I know the question's been raised about the landfill over in Springfield. And I think that needs to be addressed by a professional hydrogeologist. May lay fears or heighten fears or whatever, but, you know, I think that's the way to address that issue.
Okay, thanks. Paul?
Paul Avendroth. I mentioned before, the cost of the water that we produce is mostly wages, little electricity. And our numbers that show the cost of Springfield water versus Yellow Springs water should look at the real payroll before and after. Will you fire people off of the payroll that are now charging the time to the water? Or will you use them in the wastewater treatment plant? Because there's a minimum staffing, there's someone to fill in for vacations and overtime and so on for both those facilities. I don't think you're going to drop the cost of your. I don't think you're going to drop the cost of, that you're currently considering the cost of water by going to Springfield. I think someone should look at the real numbers and put those numbers in to the comparison.
Thanks, Paul. Any other citizen comments?
In response to Paul, we've had similar experiences in the past. We went from a village-operated solid waste collection to a contractor-operated one, and we saw that coming a year in advance. And we froze our hiring, we didn't hire anybody. And by the time the contractor took over, we had three vacancies that the people who had been collecting garbage could move to. So I would say in this case, because it's a pretty specialized field and requires licenses, we now have a total of three people running water and wastewater. We would probably go from three to two. But we probably can't run the wastewater plant with one person. So, so there would be a reduction, but probably not linear.
Yep, Dan?
Hi, Dan Reyes. I wanted to maybe build on the idea of the conversation as a committee or some sort of event, or the concept of experts that's being put out there. I think there has been, along the way over these past couple of years, a number of cases where there have been appropriate experts who have been brought in to share, and it's actually quite a variety of different perspectives, whether it's ecological or engineering or public service in some different ways. So to, you know, kind of review that as well. I guess the one concern I would have, the expert that is cited, Karen, is, in, in most recent discussion is YSI, who is also a client. And there's a conflict of interest for calling a client an expert and giving weight to that particular point of view. So, I mean, that's worth considering. I don't want to say that YSI doesn't get a say, but we have to recognize that there's a financial interest for clients and for people who are customers, in a sense, in this loop. And to, you know, to at least not have things tilted that way, unduly. So, you know, not to exclude anyone, but to, you know, keep in mind that there are also ecological perspectives to take into account. And there's something good if we could find, I mean, it's the ideal world sort of thing, but if we can find experts who don't have a stake in it, I mean, that's the best sort of neutrality we could have. Who could begin to give us a outsider's perspective on how this all looks. You know, make us step back a little bit from it.
Are you suggesting non-Yellow Springs residents? Because everybody here obviously has a stake in it.
I, I think that would be impractical, but I'm just, you know, suggesting to keep, keep some awareness about the different stakes that folks may have in it. And, you know, not to tilt things, certainly, to, to, to the, to put a undue preference toward folks who are the big customers as experts, because it's not the same thing.
Thanks, Dan. Anything else? Okay. Next on the agenda, under new business, is pool management contract for 2014. Kent has a report on that.
Yeah, Jason and I have been looking at the proposals. We went out for bids, we got four responses. Three of them were within a few hundred dollars of each other. The fourth one was higher, and the high bid was the people who managed the pool last year. So we know about Dayton Pool Management and what kind of job they'll do, and we trust them and are confident they would do a good job if we retained them. The question is, could any of these other three bidders do a good job? And I've been focusing on the low offer. All of the, all of the other bidders are from out of state. None of them operate another pool in Ohio. I talked to the low bidder. He said what they would do, and what they do generally, because they manage pools all over the country, is they hire someone in the area to be the pool manager. They bring them in and train them, and then that person, because they already live in the area, then they retain the other, they hire the other help and run the pool for the year. They did a pool in Kentucky for five years, and the people there were very happy with them. They said they did a good job, they were very responsive. They did exactly that. They came to the area in Kentucky where the pool was, found a qualified person to be the pool manager, hired them, then they went on and hired the rest of the staff. But they had very good results. They stopped using them because there was a YMCA in the community that had its own pool, and they managed it, and they finally decided there were synergies and that they could support the Y and get a good value for management of their own pool by combining forces with the Y. And that was the only reason they left, was not because of any dissatisfaction. So anyway, I, I need to do some, some looking at the other bidders, but that's, and I know there's, there have been opinions expressed that they'd like to stay with Dayton Pool because they're familiar and comfortable and local.
Do, do we have any requirement? What, what is our obligation in relation to accepting bids?
I'm going to talk to Chris. Generally, you can, most cities will allow themselves some slack and not necessarily go with a low bid. Usually, there's a reason for it, you know, they don't miss, don't meet one of the qualifications or something. I will say, I'll talk to Chris, but I think you do subject yourself to possible legal action if you reject a bid without having pretty strong grounds, with a low bid. The gap isn't huge, the gap between the high and the low is about $6,300 a year, so.
Council, do you have any comments?
Sixty-three thousand, sixty-three hundred dollars a year, yeah, that's not that-
Sixty-six thousand versus seventy-two thousand.
And Brian and I just attended the new councilperson training where they talked about this issue in a, in a charter municipality. And my understanding was that we did have a lot of latitude in hiring. And, and so a reason could be, we like the, you know, the people that have been doing it. Another reason could be, we want to support regional economy, I suppose.
But just to understand, the lower bidder would hire someone from Yellow Springs? Is that what that?
Hire someone from the region.
Okay.
It might be from Dayton.
Okay.
Wherever they can find a qualified pool manager, and that may not be in Yellow Springs.
Right.
Jerry, do you have any comments?
I've been used to working with best value, you know, and sometimes the best value may be a little higher.
Sure. So. I've done that myself.
So, it's, yeah.
I mean, Jeff Bloom, I understand, was here almost every day, or, or at least once a week. Jeff Bloom, who was the, who's the operator or the manager of Dayton Pool. I mean, there, there is honestly no question in my mind that for that small amount of money, and it's actually almost ten thousand less than, or it's about five thousand less than last year, right? They're, they're, they were at seventy-nine last year, right?
Yeah, and they're bidding seventy-two this year.
So, so it's seven thousand dollars less, I think, if I can do my math. So I would be, I would be very inclined, unless you find out, I mean, and I guess what I'm thinking is that, is that the goal would be for us to have legislation hiring this company at the next meeting. You won't be able to be here, so if, you know, I guess, whatever you find out. I, I think you're hearing, well, I'll, I'll hear from citizens, okay, let's hear from citizens first. Any comments or questions from citizens? Jerry?
I don't know if there's any attempt made, but I'd encourage some conversation with the staff of the pool last year, the young people in the village who worked at the pool last year, and get their comments. I understood the number of them were unhappy with, with the situation last year.
My understanding is that what they were unhappy with was the fact that they weren't getting a lot of, as many hours as they had been. It was, things were more structured, is that what you understood, Jerry?
Yeah, and especially for the college kids that had had jobs in the past, they looked at that as a way of trying to augment their income for the summer.
Oh, sure.
And when they got only one or two hours a week, where they, had they known that ahead of time, they would have tried to find a different employment, so. But I'm, I'm assuming that there was some type of questionnaires that the kids filled out and turned in to the village.
You mean at the end of the summer?
At the end of the summer.
Oh, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so, then you probably weren't aware of some of the concerns.
I mean, I think that the, that the comment to that would be, just don't hire as many people, or, or don't commit to as many, or have, you know, have people on standby or something, with the understanding that they may not get as many hours. I did talk to Rachel McKinley, speaking for Sea Dogs, and she had very positive things to say about how things went. So I, I think you're hearing from council that our inclination is to stick with Dayton Pool unless you hear something that, that, you know, has a big impact on you.
Okay.
Managers' report?
For those of you who want to do your online shopping while you're at the, at the council meeting, we now have a public Wi-Fi system available in the building. We were not subsidized by Amazon, but they'll take that. Talked about the pool. Melissa's going to cover for me while I'm in the hospital. We are publishing an ad in the paper this week to request qualifications for engineers to do the design work for the water system distribution projects that need to be done. One of those grants will be available in July, and I don't know that we'll have everything done and ready to go to bid by then, but I'd like to be ready as soon after that as possible.
And what's the limit on that money? What's our, when do we have to use it by?
I don't know the deadline.
Okay.
I just know it'll be available July 1st, so.
Now, is that available for us to?
It's for the, for the bottleneck, not to the bottleneck, for the loop completion program.
Is that a matching?
It's a match, yeah.
Yeah, I think we have to come up with four fifty.
Yes, yeah, we do have, and they do have. I really think that's all. Yeah.
Sounds good.
Except I would like to just add what I had emailed. One of the things in Kent's manager report was a citizen from Marshall Street had come to speak with Kent about trucks coming into Antioch College and, you know, could they be rerouted? And he was very impressed. I saw him, I think, the day after he spoke with Kent, and there was already a sign up. Traffic was rerouted, so it didn't go through that neighborhood street. And I just thought it was awesome that, that happened so quickly. So, thanks a lot.
Yeah, we, we had a case recently where somebody called and there'd been a water line break, and the silt from the, it was stirred up, covered their parking area, their gravel parking area in front of their house. And he asked, could we bring some gravel? And they got on it the same day, and superintendent came in, he was very proud. You gave me this this morning, here it is afternoon, and it's already done. I called the man, and he said, well, that was very nice, but it was my neighbor's place, you fixed one. So we had to go back and do it again. But they are very conscientious.
And I think it's, it's good to mention that a lot of things do get done in a timely manner.
Clerk? Judy?
Hey, we had a little flurry of requests for public records, and we had a number of meetings in the last couple of weeks. There is a special meeting scheduled for Planning Commission, which, which will take place on March 31st, 7th. And that notice will appear in the, in the Yellow Springs News, you know, in a timely manner. And I said, assuming Kent is here, I congratulate you for surviving the eyes of March, and I look forward to your triumphant return at the end of the month, so. Good luck.
Standing reports, Lori isn't here. Kent, could you review the Planning Commission meeting briefly?
Yes, yeah, there were two or three things that came up. One was some proposed rezoning for the Creative Memories property. So, because right now it's zoned for heavy industry, and the new owner is trying to bring in a variety of smaller enterprises that don't fit that zoning. And so they want to zone it as planned unit development, so they can have more flexibility in the kinds of businesses they put in there. The other was a subdivision plan for the Center for Business and Education. And there was a third one, which was a variation in use for a commercial property on Dayton Street. It's been retail, but there's a new business in there that also wants to use it for meetings and seminars and education, which are a little bit out of the ordinary for that zone. And so they'd asked for a variance, I guess, or a conditional use permit. And the public hearings couldn't happen because the notices that are required had not gone out. So the Planning Commission is going to hold a special meeting on March 31st to readdress those topics and do it legally.
Thanks. Jerry?
Unfortunately, I've been out of pocket, and it was fortunate for me that none of my committees met, so.
They missed you.
Yeah. But Library, as again, meets every, on the even, even months. So should have something, something from them. Mediation very seldom meets, and CBE, I missed a couple of those meetings, so I can't really speak to that. Mary Ann might be able to speak, if she probably missed.
No, well, no, I didn't know that you weren't at, able to attend that.
You weren't.
Yeah, I was at the last one.
Oh.
And I missed, we had some subcommittee meetings, so I missed.
Yeah, I'm going to start with the Public Art Commission, and I see that Katie and Allison are here. Did you guys want to say anything about the trash? I mean, since you're here, you can speak better than me, I think, on it. And there is a letter from Allison, as well as some pictures of our first, of hopefully more, mosaic trash cans created by Katie and Beth.
Good evening. I'm Allison Paul, I'm the manager at the John Brink Company. And we have a really exciting lineup of classes this spring, one of which we hope to have is Beth Elliott and Katie Seidel's Public Art Mosaic Trashcan Workshop, just like the one that's in front of Karan Cuisine. They will be sponsored entirely by the pottery and business owners. Darkstar and the Yellow Springs Pottery have both expressed interest already in sponsoring. So it'll be a four-week workshop taking place in May. It's just on Saturday afternoons, and it would be installed, hopefully, by the beginning of June. So these would complement the one that's already there. We talked about spacing them out so aesthetically it provides interest and kind of mixes with the existing trash cans. And I think it's just a really great opportunity to take advantage of our artists' knowledge and expertise and to add to the beautiful public art that we already have. It's such a valuable asset to Yellow Springs. I think this is a great educational collaboration with those teachers. Thank you.
I have a request. If you, if you put one in front of the credit union, put a couple of loops on it so I'll have someplace to tie my dogs. The bank says they're welcome, but the credit union says, keep those furry monsters out of yours. There's no place to tie them.
Thanks, Allison. So Allison came to the Public Art Commission meeting last week, and I think one of the main things was, they just wanted to make sure that they could move forward with this class. I know that Darkstar in particular is one of the sponsors and would like to have a trash can in front of their, well, a piece of art in front of their shop. And so I, I think this was, the commission felt good about this project, and I think it was just kind of a, make sure there weren't any reservations from council about it.
And I take it we still have, Jason took all those other ones out to the farm, right? All the old ones, I think, still exist, right, or a lot of them?
Yep.
Okay. I'm absolutely fine, I'm excited, obviously, about it. Any, I don't think this is- I don't think this is, council really needs to have anything else to say about it. Thank you.
So, other updates from the Public Art Commission. We had a great discussion. Amanda, who spoke at our meeting last time, came to the meeting, and we talked a little bit about some of the things, besides the physical improvements, which, you know, we talked about as council, also getting community more involved in supporting programming and other things, tutoring and whatnot. There was a meeting on Saturday that had several individuals that were really interested. Samantha, who works here, Samantha Stevens, was also there, and I think there's a lot of excitement about that. So I think everyone agrees that there should be a cooperation between the village and, you know, some of the funds that we can provide to fix physical aspects, but also really the community being involved and volunteering. On a related note, to kind of combine commissions, the Human Relations Commission approved a request from the Youth Center to fix up some of the equipment, the air hockey machine that doesn't work at all, the foosball machine that's broken down, the pool table. So I thought that was great. I actually wasn't at that meeting, Mary Ann was there, but I think, you know, a lot of different aspects of supporting youth programming are happening. We also talked briefly about the skate park, and my understanding is that Jason's going to try to be at the next meeting to look at some of the details for that. But basically, one of the things I know we have on our capital plan is fixing the skate park so that it's safe. And one of the recommendations that was made was to put together a task force of experts in skating, all right? So some skaters and some other folks that know how it's used and could work with Jason to figure out what's practical to be done. That made a lot of sense to me. And then we got an update on the Bronze Trail. It looks like our Dayton Street location, I think Kent, you and Jason went out with Joanne, and decided that the low wall in front of AC would be an ideal spot for that, and would minimize any traffic issues and whatnot. So I think that's great, as long as you guys feel comfortable with that.
Yeah, and I think at the next meeting, do we need, do we need formal action on the memorandum of understanding for the sculpture?
Oh, yes, we haven't done that, have we?
No.
So, yes.
So that would need to come to us, and does it need to run by Chris?
Needs to be by Chris, yeah.
So I will probably let Mary Ann talk about the HRC meeting, but I just wanted to say, related to community access, Paul informed me that we're ready to start trying to broadcast live on the web. So, Paul's still around? Yep. So, yeah, so we're going to start trying to see how that might work, again, using YouTube, but the idea would be that maybe there's a couple-minute delay, but basically people can be watching it sort of in real time. And I did want to announce that our meeting this month will not be on the 20th, but will be on the 27th.
Mary Ann?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question about the, or make a comment, I guess, about the skate park. When I was looking at Jason's, was it annual report? I think, yeah. It seemed like there were a lot of times that the skate park was involved, I think, in various, having to do various repairs. So I'm not sure what this little, this task force is, but if the village is putting a lot of personnel time in the skate park, I think it's important that we be assured that the people using the skate park are taking care of it. And I don't know whether there's vandalism happening, or whether things are just wearing out, but having the skaters involved in, in the planning and, and taking responsibility for maintaining it, I think, is important.
Yeah, and related to that, there, it was pretty interesting, because my brother's on the Public Art Commission, and he had been involved in fundraising originally, so, and he was a former skater, so he had some background. But it turns out that Patrick O'Reilly knows some folks that actually know what kind of materials can be used that will be more resilient, so that we won't have to do so many repairs in the future. So that's what, you know, I felt like we don't have that expertise, but with Jason working with them, I think they could come up with some good solutions.
Yeah, the money in the, that we're proposing as, for the capital budget for the skate park, is basically an upgrade of materials. The facilities will remain similar, but instead of wood, we're going to either use concrete or some type of a very durable structural plastic material that won't be so prone to being broken.
Good, okay. Yeah, I attended the Human Relations Commission meeting as an alternate from Bryan, and I have one request, suggestion, I guess, that the alternates for the different commissions receive the minutes from those commissions. So when we come to a commission meeting, we know what people have been doing. And in this case, I came to the HRC commission not understanding that Chief Pettiford had come to a previous meeting to get feedback from HRC. So there was a little, there was a misunderstanding between me and Officer Knapp, who had come to that meeting where I was talking to him, and in the end, a week later, I found out that that discussion had already happened. So I apologize to the police for that. But at the HRC meeting, the HRC received, well, at least about four or five requests for grants, and one of the things that the committee members did is looked at, did those grant requests fall in line of the mission of HRC? And several of the grant requests, they determined, did not. And the one that did was the grant request from the Youth Center down, downstairs in the Bryan Center, that Bryan mentioned. Let's see, what else did they? There was also a discussion about mental health, developing a list, I think, of assets and resources regarding mental health in the village that's being worked on. Those are the two main things that happened in the HRC meeting. Energy Board meeting, we did discuss the concern about are there spikes and brownouts in the village? We didn't know, so we are requesting to get, want a copy of the Electric Task Force report to see if there's anything related in that report to be followed up on. The discussion seemed to indicate that the reliability of service in town for electricity is definitely increased, and the issues that have happened frequently are not our issues, but are issues of DP and L, as opposed to the village. There was discussion about Antioch and the Antioch Solar Farm, discussion about the possibility of having a community solar farm, and what that might look like, and that was sort of looking at the possibility of doing that at the Vernay property, which I guess had been a discussion that happened somehow. Laura Kerlis was here. And Rick Waki is now the new chair of the Energy Task Force. And I think, I think that's all.
On the electric issue, this is really old information, but I tried for years to get YSI to be a Yellow Springs Village electric customer, and they had one member of their management who was dead-set against it, and I won't go into details about why that was, but it was personal, it had nothing to do with business. But after he retired, and I had left, Dave Heckler was the village manager, he went out and put recording meters on YSI's plant, and then we put them also somewhere else nearby on one of our customers' feeds. And it turned out, and again, this is 15 years ago, that village power was more reliable and of better quality, less variation, than what they were getting from DP and L. Plus, we were cheaper, so that made it pretty simple. And YSI is now a village power customer. So now, we can, I'll talk to Johnny about doing an updated study, because it's possible, as I said, we have recording meters that will tell you, you know, when there are interruptions and when there are variations in the voltage, and we can put them at maybe some key locations.
And we didn't really know whether this was an issue, but it was raised in that letter by Steve Neal. And if it's not an issue, or if we do have good, reliable power, that is something we can promote, I think, for businesses, considering.
Yes, I don't like the words brownouts connected to our electric system getting into our minutes, because I really don't think it's an issue. I mean, one of the, one of the more recent issues that happened was when the pole came down. That, I know that that caused issues with a major customer, where, when the pole went down, that caused an issue, and then when the power went back on again, there was a spike. But, but that is, that is an issue that nobody, it has nothing to do with a brownout, it has nothing to do with a spike related to inadequate electric power. It has to do, it had to do with, with an accident that created that problem. So I really do, now that this discussion is happening, I really would like Johnny to get some, some reports, because I don't want there to be any implication that there is a problem with our electric system.
Can I just get clarification on one thing? Is Energy Board now meeting only once a month?
Yes, the second Thursday of the month.
Chamber of Commerce, we do have a meeting, there is a meeting this Thursday, a chamber chat here at the Bryan Center in A and B. It will be to discuss events, it's a merchant meeting to discuss events and activities happening, also to talk about marketing programs. And another thing that is happening that hasn't been mentioned is Arts Council is doing a really fun project at, down at the hotel, they're doing a fence, a public art project, that there's going to be four-by-four panels placed above the chain-link fence, and it's going to last, I think, from May to September, or June to September. But they're looking, you can buy a panel for $100, they will either find an artist to do it, to paint it for you, or you can find your own artist. The artists get a small stipend, so it should really be a fun project. So I would encourage anybody who's interested to look into that. And VRPC, I missed the meeting last week. Brian and I were in school up in Columbus doing economic development training. Oh, future agenda items. So we're done with capital budget, so Melissa, we will have, are we going to have, will we have legislation on the 7th, or are we just going to have a discussion?
I had submitted the updated capital budget based on Kent and I's recollections from when capital was discussed a while ago. So that was in the packet, I think, two meetings ago.
Yeah, I think it was the 21st.
So I don't know if that was okay with everybody, or if there were changes that needed to be made to that. So I, my intention was just to bring that back, to have a solid discussion based upon our recollections.
So not legislation on the 7th, just a discussion?
Yeah.
Counsel, I would agree, okay. Let's see, what, well, we already did the Energy Board annual report. Planning or Library Commission, do we have an anticipation that either of those will have an annual report?
Matt has made some mutterings in that direction, I don't have anything solid. Library Commission, I know Jerry, he had indicated they will meet on the 1st, the meeting's the 7th, I don't know if that gives you time, or we should just go ahead and tell them that they will be on the, what is it, 21st of April, and let them?
I think they'll probably be able to give their annual report. It's probably done already.
Okay, so then Planning Commission, I mean, they're having special meetings, I'm sure that they're way too busy, honestly, to be able to put together an annual report. And will the ordinance involving the Glenn easement, will that be ready for the 7th? Okay. And will, will somebody, who will be here to be able to explain it?
Let me think about who could come. Probably Joe Bates would be the best person.
Okay, so Melissa, could you make sure Joe's at the meeting? Thanks.
And then will we have the pool contract resolution at that time?
Yeah. I guess we need to anticipate that we'll have some discussion about the village manager hiring process.
And then you wanted the MOU for the Bronze Trail to come back?
Yeah.
Well, I think the other issue will be, and I think, I think we should anticipate an executive session for the village manager.
On the 7th?
Search on the 7th.
Yep.
Just schedule it. Doug's not here any longer. Let's schedule it tentatively for 6 o'clock again, so that Doug can get out of here.
Yep.
And he may even, we may even be able to do it with him on speakerphone and not in person.
The other thing that I wanted to add was that Jerry and I had been tasked with coming to council with a proposal for how to move forward on a designated CIC, and so I'd like to put that on a future agenda, just to come forward with a plan.
I mean, so do you want it on the 7th, or do you just want?
Yeah, that would work.
Okay.
And that reminded me, we had talked about possibly having a presentation about port authorities. Do we want to try to do that in April?
Do you want to try that for the second meeting?
Yes.
So what would that be?
The 21st.
And would you ask Russell or?
Yeah, Pete and Martin Russell, yep.
I don't know why I.
I know. Martin and Russell.
And also the chamber.
Council chambers update. When will, when will that be?
Put that for the 21st.
And that is just as a discussion?
Although, do we need to have that as part of the, well, we can, can you have something next week, our next meeting, so that Melissa can include it in the capital?
Yeah, yeah. There is money in the capital budget.
Oh, there is? Okay, okay, so then we will, so it's in there?
I think upgrades as a whole.
Okay, so we'll keep that as a place, as a placeholder for now, and then you can do it on the 21st, okay?
Just kind of, because I thought I saw it in there.
Okay, great. Anything else? Kent, we wish you the best. We will, we will miss you for the time you're gone, and despite my earlier comments, we're expecting you back in two weeks. And. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
Got his place.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Happy St. Patrick's Day.